We had some dialogue about it and really just want to continue the dialogue. I spoke with some people in town as well as the folks on the finance committee and we've got a general idea of what we'd like to proceed. I want to know if there's any comments from anybody regarding the language currently. I will say mainly to Joan, we talked and we are going to remove that language about blight. We thought that that was important to-
I didn't see them, I mean, I hear why you're mentioning that word to me.
Yeah.
But I've not seen the first grant or the second grant or whatever, so I can't say they're not better or malice.
Yeah, I didn't even think it was in there.
I know.
Oh, they mentioned it three times.
It was, we didn't know it was in there and you brought it to our attention, so thank you for that.
The really cool thing is they usually do an ordinance number, this one is ordinance name, Joan theirs.
My work here is done.
Only recognition.
No, I like the-
I mentioned the power.
It was reworked from decreased blight to improved property aesthetics.
Very positive.
Well, again, as I mentioned, blight is a federally defined word. It means stuff that none of this has.
Right.
Does that mean-
Well, I mean, I think that's the reason it got in there because so much of the grant programs that were kind of copied and looked at reuse that federally defined thing, but I think it's not good to put in.
What caught my attention without listening back to meetings from this long ago is 2019 or prior when they were talking about the reason to reduce CBD because of the blight. And I'm like, I don't know about that. And then I was informed by another association that blight, you need to mean it when you say it. You can't say blighted because there is a chip on that little key when you go back to that chair.
Why that chair?
That chair, you know what I'm saying?
And we agree with that.
I can always speak to myself on the morning.
Well, we agree with that, but feedback's important. I've heard the work thrown around just in general, a little bit in town, just mostly in regards to properties that are abandoned, a couple-
Not all areas, but individual.
Correct.
And I can see where that work is coming, related to the discussion.
You're right. You're right. I think we just want to be really careful about how we use an ordinance because in this instance, it's not necessary. I think improved property aesthetics is much more appropriate. And so really, this is probably going to be kind of a quick meeting. I'm interested in any comments, but we talked last time. Adam brought up a few issues with some of the possible ways to spend the $60,000 grow grant money every year as they're written into the ordinance. And I talked to Adam about this after that meeting. I doubt I changed his mind on it, but I really feel strongly that the ordinance is written well right now and that the objective is not to, and I kind of mentioned this, so I'm sorry for being redundant, but it's not, the objective is not to write out potential opportunities that we have to help businesses in the future. And so this is the first pass at getting a program into getting it codified as an official ordinance. And in talking with Matt, I think he's got the right frame of mind, and that is as we move forward, you know, this is one time a year, every year, the $60,000 is available for the business property improvements. And as we move forward, Matt's going to present to council how that money is spent each year, answer any questions about specifics. And if we get to a point where we feel like, hey, we might be spending this money in a way that could be better suited, or maybe we wish we hadn't given the grant money to this particular cause, we can always, we can always address that at a later date. But I really feel strongly that the businesses in town, they're, for starters, there's some change. As we know, there's new businesses coming to the central business district, there's some new ones coming, the coast being one right here in the south end of town. That's going to continue to happen and hopefully we can get some businesses that stay and have success and longevity in town. That's what we all want. Being a realist, I don't know that that's going to happen in every single instance. And so I want to make sure that we have, that the language doesn't limit us or hinder us from being able to provide the grow grant money to businesses that apply. And those applications are reviewed and vetted by city staff and ultimately approved. As I said, Matt will present on that, you know, next year, once we, once that round of grant money is then spent. But I, I'm in favor of the language that's written with the, with getting rid of the language about blight. That was, I think that is important. And I think this is a great starting point. It's a great, it's a great stepping stone and the grow grant's been around since 2018. We haven't had it codified. And so I know this is one of many steps. We want to get some of this stuff into writing that we've just been doing because we've been doing it over the years. And so this is a step in that direction. I'm really comfortable with language. Happy to take any comments.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I think that the big, the most important part to me is the oversight piece and the approval Having a broad scope of what can be covered doesn't make sense unless you have a lot of oversight and a very strict approval process. Without one, I wouldn't want it written the way that it is, but because that, we have that approval process, I think it works, I think, with the way it's written, it works great.
I think it does too. And, you know, I think that the grant process since 2018 has been a big success. This past year, we got opportunities to spend a little bit more money in different ways and that was largely because of some of the American Rescue Plan funding that we got. And they were, they loosened up the, they loosened up some of the strengths as to how we're able to spend, that's where more flexibility. But for the grow grant, nothing changes except that the same amount of money comes from the lease across the street. Is that Cincinnati though or AT&amp;T? Or it's actually by the city though. By the city though, I'm sorry. The one other change which I think is really positive, and I know I think I mentioned it to you on the phone, Peggy, but Matt, will you just really quickly talk about the 50/50 versus 70/30?
Yeah, so, you know, one of the things I wanted to bring up when I first looked at this was the city was putting up 70% of the money when the businesses were only putting 30%. And initially, in my opinion, the businesses weren't putting up, didn't have enough skin in the game for some of the improvements. Not to mention that really limited how much money we had to go around to multiple businesses. So, you know, we talked about a 60/40, but ultimately came to a staff recommendation of 50%. So they put up 50, we put up 50. I think that's extremely fair. And I think that makes sure that the business, it's something the business really wants to do because I think for a 30% investment, it's kind of, could be one of those things, well, I'd like to do it, it's not really that big of a deal though, but if the city's not giving that much money. So that's kind of where we, where we landed with 50%, I think it's fair across the board. And I think we'll see, we'll be able to, we'll be able to affect more businesses throughout town with that as well.
That's great.
I have a question about, you were saying the existing ordinance versus post ordinance, if I'm hearing you correctly. Is the existing the one that Matt was discussing at city council last month? Because my understanding, and please tell me if I'm wrong or in which way I'm wrong, Matt, you were saying it hadn't really been affirmed up ordinance?
No, he's talking about the draft, last, last meeting's draft.
Is that the one that you presented?
Yes. Yeah, so no, you're right, there's, there's not been an ordinance.
That's what I thought. So this new, this new one that you don't need to be tweaked is, I mean, the whole reading that's need to be tweaked is really still from day one.
It's correct.
Like, brand new.
There was not a-
That's not-
That's right, sorry about that.
That's a month, it was a month.
And it wasn't even, it was just a draft.
Right.
Yeah.
And you're sticking with that draft?
With, with the changes to removing the word blight and as we mentioned-
50/50.
50/50, correct. I'd like to leave everything else in it, and I'd like to, like to recommend that it goes to council for consideration that way.
Okay, and was the, you mentioned that you and Adam had a discussion, was that about the foundation? Does he seem to be talking a lot about that?
Quite honestly, it wasn't very detailed. It was, it was the weekend after that meeting, he came to deliver a maybe gift, and I just mentioned two of my thoughts on, on how it was written.
That was nice of you to get into that. Then I do have one other, and I could be wrong about which grant was which, but, and when, when we don't have handouts and the way it is, it's hard to really follow exactly what it was. But at one point, I thought I saw 18,000 dollars for a hood, like an exhaust hood in Fort Thomas coffee. Now, if I'm correct on that, and tell me again, I am more than willing to say, to accept one if I'm told I'm wrong on it, that's a brand new building, how could they possibly be, they didn't need a new hood, they either didn't have a hood and they're, they're changing, that seemed, that seemed up to-
That has nothing to do with this grant, because that, those are different rules that were set because of the other grants.
Okay.
So that's, yeah, that's, that's pretty different in this grant. But that was another reason to do this, is moving forward, we're not going to be doing the upfit, the grow, and the rent subsidy, that was just this year alone. This is, this is moving forward.
Thank you for that clarification.
And I have a question again on the deck. I thought on the last meeting about this, you guys were kind of combining the upfit, the grow grant. Is that not correct, or is this all just outside?
No, this isn't, this is inside. We did add some of the terminology from the, what council wanted with the upfit for interior.
Okay, so this is for interior and exterior, correct?
It could be both.
Those are options.
That's what we wanted to leave that in there.
Okay, that's fine. And also, can I, I have a question. How do you guys reach out to the business owners about these ordinance that they make it? What is the outreach?
So with this, we'll be sending, you know, we've been waiting on our article regarding who, who received it recently. And the reason we pulled it off is because this took longer than we expected. I was hoping to have first reading last month. So in November, after this is, assuming this is passed in November, we'll, we'll be doing a article about who the grant recipients are this year and the new program moving out. So that'll be the first step. We'll also be using Renaissance Board and then our economic development director-
Where's the article go? Because-
We'll be sending it out through Link, Link NY.
Okay, but that doesn't reach everybody. I mean, because some people don't know about these grants, so-
It'll be, I mean, it'll be on our website, it'll be on Facebook, you know, all, all the other areas. But, but the businesses are pretty connected through, you know, Facebook and the website.
I know, but not all of them.
Could it go into the newsletter?
Yeah.
But I think that's-
The next newsletter will be included.
And who gets to decide which business gets them? I mean, because you have a window, right? So you have to split between this date and this date. It's not a first come, first served, right?
Correct.
Someone might find out about it the day by the deadline. How do you decide who gets it? Because I'm sure you get a lot of people wanting this.
Yeah, it'll be, the decision, the ultimate decision makers will be myself, economic development director and the mayor. So the, the, it's laid out, it's laid out in here. Ultimately, it's obviously the mayor's recommended, final recommendation, but as it's laid out in here, the, the economic development director will receive them all, will evaluate them to ensure that they meet the basic requirements for it. After that, then the economic development director, myself, will meet, and then once we take a look at it, then we'll meet with the mayor, make the recommendations, make sure everybody's good with it and then we move on. You are right that there's going to be time frames.
Yes.
But just because it's one timeframe doesn't mean that we won't have another one. It'll all be within the budget year. So if we open it up and it'll be a shorter time period, it's what we're planning on writing, it'll be like a month opportunity. Once we evaluate those-
So you're trying to say a month?
I think, I'll have to double check, it'll probably be 30, 60 days. But generally, the shorter timeframe is what we've been using here and it's been working pretty well. Once we have our first applications and we've allocated a set amount, if we've only allocated 40,000, we'll probably open it up again. If that makes sense. So the goal would be to use, you know, to award, be able to award the 60,000 total if possible.
Yeah, yeah, so someone, and so you're having a pack, so this draft, this is going to be online somewhere where the businesses can read it and see if they qualify for it? And you're going to put it out when you do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And an important thing to note about it too, so it's the $60,000 annually, and in the language, any business that applies and is awarded money can be awarded up to $20,000, okay?
Even if it's over two?
In one year.
Right.
Now, if, if they're awarded $20,000 in year one and they apply for money again the next year and the city teams that they're, that decides to award the money again, they can only get a total of up to $25,000 over a five-year period. So they would only get, if, if appropriate, 5,000 the next year, and then they'd be done for the following three years until that five-year period will last.
But if, if Matt said, say, we don't use it all, the 60, you know, totally, they can't apply that same year if there's another, like, phase two of it, if they've gotten twice. But if they got 10 the first time, they can maybe get 10 the second time?
Yeah, so how we have it here, how it's written currently is that they can only apply over two years. So they have to wait one, one year out to get more money. And the other additional one to bring up was the 25 total, 25,000 total within five years. That's just to make sure everybody gets an opportunity. Now, we did write in here that if it is a special situation, a special business, something that we, you know, a focal point of an area that maybe we want to help out more, that they could get more than the 25,000, and that's in total grants. If there are any other new grants that come up with the city, like the three that we're using right now. So the goal is every five years, we won't exceed $25,000 in grants from the city. But if we do deem a project as worthy of it because of, you know, other circumstances that we can bring in front of council and make an approval. But it would be a staff approval, that, that would be the limit that the staff would be allowed.
And there's a no limit to that? Or are you still restricted to that?
It would be no limit to that, I guess, if council agrees. Still, the, still the ordinance limits 60,000 a year and 20,000 a project per year. But I guess essentially they could, they could get 20 and 20 if council would approve. I wanted to leave that in there, just, there's situations come up that maybe would be beneficial.
Yeah, we want to have the ability to make that decision if necessary. I just hope people recognize this, I mean, I haven't been on council that long, this grant program is so key and not that many communities are able to provide it year in and year out. The $60,000, we have this dedicated funding source that we decided to use, and it wasn't my doing, it was prior to me. But it's really, it's a really great way not, not just to attract new businesses, that's obviously part of it, but to retain the businesses that we have. And also, in the big picture, just to show a partnership between the city and the, and the businesses themselves. I think it's one of the, that I-
If, if it is, if everyone knew about all the businesses, you know, it's done for the same one. Of the upfit, I'm sorry, is, is that going to be counted too for the people? If you got some from the upfit, is it upfit or a, I'm sorry?
Upfit.
Upfit, is that going to keep them, like, let's say they got the max from the upfit, or is that going to count until they do wait 20 years for the grow grant money?
No, but it will go into account the 25,000 total that they're eligible to get over a five-year period.
Okay, so it will-
So they can't get 20 and 20?
Up to 25, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, they could apply if they got 20 this year, in two years, they could apply for 5,000.
Gotcha.
But, but, or if they, I guess technically if they did the upfit this year, they could apply for the remainder for the grow grant specialty.
Gotcha, okay.
But we've got to prioritize ones that haven't been, haven't seen any.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it does.
And really, the only other thing that Adam I did talk to, Lisa, she's, she's in agreement with the language too, and excited about it, so. There's not further discussion, I would recommend-
I have a few questions.
Yeah, fine.
Thank you, appreciate it. First of all, just talking about the intent of the ordinance, you can grow grants in the first place. I heard that originally, the intent of the grow grant was to help the exterior of the businesses, is that correct?
Yes. It was first, first put in place, yeah.
And are we expanding that out of something?
Yes, there will be internal improvements. We, we do have a list of some internal, inside improvements that would benefit-
And I heard that includes some structural improvements, is that correct?
Yes, some, some structural improvements will be covered, yes.
So where do we end with helping a business and then helping a landlord? What's the delineation between the two of these? In my house, for instance, I'm shelling, I mean, a lot of structural stuff. Okay, now, 30 years ago when you did it. I guess that's my, that's my concern, you know, but where does, what is the intent here? I guess that's my concern.
The way that I, the way that I look into it is, I'm sorry, Matt, get it wrong, but the way that I interpret that is, is if a current business or a business is going to expand in a building that cannot hold that current, or that the new, what the new business is going to look like, this could help with that.
In what way?
Like if you, yeah, if you, if they need to bring in a bigger ice maker, or the structural, current structure will not sustain that ice maker, they need to bring in a stove, a larger stove versus stove, or they need to throw an addition on the back, and they had to throw in a beam to help with the structure, or a foundation or whatnot. Not the way that I'm reading it.
Not, not making a new roof?
No, roof will not be covered.
Yeah, that's not a-
The intent of this is not, and that's something I'm very specific about, is not for general maintenance. So if it's something that a business just has to pay for, like a roof, like just a replacement of an HVAC system that doesn't, that doesn't improve the code or something that has to be redone, if it's just a straight replacement of a, of a roof or a HVAC or, you know, even a parking lot, that's just normal business maintenance that we're not talking here. This is talking about improvements that are going to increase the value of the property because they're trying to improve their business for the buildings. So that makes sense.
So I guess I could back to the intent, because if the intent is to make the outside of buildings before Thomasville grow, I mean, that's awesome. If the intent is to help our businesses succeed, I mean, that's awesome. But I think we have to get kind of a near, figure out what our focus is.
Yeah, so it's going to be, it's going to be external and it's going to be internal. So the internal will be like-
The intent now is to help businesses.
Help the businesses, but also for the internal will be more helping the customers too, so ADA compliance or bathrooms. You know, I specifically put in here, customer restrooms, not, not staff restrooms in the back, right? This money isn't going to go to helping the staff bathroom be better. It would, but the focus is going to be on customers coming in, if they can easily access bathrooms through ADA and things like that, if that makes sense to you.
It does. My next question is, what is a business? How do we define, is it, if I go up to Fort Thomas and I buy myself a building and I write that out to a business?
All right, go ahead.
We do have, yeah, so we do have eligible businesses here. It's got to be a smaller business, so the payroll's got to be less than 750,000 a year. Can't be a sexually oriented business. It can't be a business that already gives incentives from the Commonwealth where we have a cut into it. So if they're already getting money from the city, they're not going to get more money. Any kind of incentives that way. So that, that's the, I mean, that's, that's the eligible businesses, ones that haven't received it in the last two years and then the 25,000.
How can you define, what she's saying, you have a building and it has all these businesses in it, which is improving that landlord's building, can those, all those businesses in it as well-
Apply for each one, yeah.
The landlord, since it says business?
The landlord can apply or the businesses can apply.
So every business could apply within that building as well as the landlord? That's it?
They have to not, I mean, I think the definition of a business is somebody that has an occupational license within the city of Fort Thomas that has less than 750,000 in payroll.
Has less?
Less than. So we don't want to, we don't want to, you know, the, the larger businesses-
Same group?
Yeah, same group.
I guess it's a payers' one, yeah. But it would be, so if you have a, you own a building that has three smaller businesses in it, would the, the building owner could apply, and each of the three businesses could apply? First of all, same business, 60,000 could be gone very quickly. What, what is the, like, payroll obligation of the building owner? Because he's not, but he's not a business.
I mean, I guess typically, I think, I think if the business owner had multiple businesses inside there, it'd be more to look at aesthetics anyway. But if, but all these are going to be evaluated by staff and make the decision, I mean, just because they apply doesn't mean they're guaranteed. It's going to be a process, just like the state, when the state gets, you know, we, we got rejected for my grant last week. You've got to, the package's got to be good, it has to justify over other businesses that are interested.
So it is, it is, now, how do you say yes? It is comparative of who needs it more? For instance, if there's a fire and somebody having a hardship-
No, we won't be doing for fire repair, that's, that would be insurance.
So I guess maybe my, my point might not be, so under structural improvements, maybe tips a lawyer so he can figure out this language, but something like structural improvements is related to the business activity. So in other words, we're not going to go in and change something that would just benefit the landlord? If it was unrelated to-
If the back of the, if the mortar, the back of the business or their, the foundation is falling apart, that's a maintenance issue. We're not going to give them money for them to go and fix. If there's an, and again, it's, there's an approval process, so all this stuff has to be, has to be detailed and reviewed. And if there is a structural piece that could help an ADA compliance or help expand a bathroom or, or help bringing a new piece of equipment that needs additional, additional structure, that's, that's what I think is, is the intent here as opposed to a landlord having a saggy floor and going in and saying, well, we need it in beam here because our floor's saggy. Well, that's a maintenance issue. That's, that's something that landlords need to-
So what if you put in, what if you did say structural improvements and, like, you can, like, yes, just a suggestion, as relates to the business activity?
So Peggy, I think, and a lot of these what ifs are something we're going to go through over the next couple of years. Because that's kind of what made it so broad, is to be able to take a look at different options. And, you know, like I told Ben, next year, we're going to look at this, and next year, I'm going to tell council, I like the, how it's written, or these couple of changes would be beneficial to help us. I'm not going to know all the answers because each situation's going to be different. What I can tell you is, the staff's going to take a look at all the applications and we're going to, we're going to try to be as thorough as we can and see which businesses is going to have the biggest impact for the city and for the customers. So that's, that's-
I'm just trying to tighten it up so you guys don't get criticism, honestly, so you guys don't get criticized or favoring-
I'm used to getting criticisms, it's okay.
One-
I think we're not going to get, we're not going to get criticized.
I know, I know, but I truly, I'm suggesting this, not to be a personal side, but honestly, just to tighten it up, because then, you know, there's not any of this blah, 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 blah. So that's the reason, I mean, you may want to, as it's just a business, or you may want to put like a few extra words in there.
The difficulty running to is you and I interpret statutes all the time, finding that sweet spot.
Exactly.
Not too stringent and defined, not too loose, and it's finding that sweet spot. And I, I hear what you're saying, I don't think that's necessarily a bad idea. I do think that this is a good start and getting to the point where staff can start to work through it, I would be really surprised if in the next year or two, Matt doesn't go back and go, let's tweak this, tweak that, and, and get it a little tighter in surface box. And maybe loosen it up in surface box, because we all love really tight, easily read and defined ideas until they don't fit something that we think is good. And so it's finding that sweet spot. I think that's, our belief is this is a, a good start. And I think that's a whole lot different than what it was when we didn't have any ordinance that's left.
It's actually, I think it's excellent that you're putting this into an ordinance and I, and I appreciate, I appreciate that supply point. What's, what's the downside of putting in a little language like that?
Well, the down, the issue, and I understand what you're saying, if there, if there was no limit to the amount of money that was allocated to this and that anybody could apply, and if they fit these ramifications, they could get funding, that would definitely be an issue. But because this is a rating system and it's a limited pot of money, and people will submit their applications, and we go through the applications, and as Matt just said, it will be rated based on what's the best benefit of the city. You know, exterior stuff is going to have more of a priority than interior stuff because that will have more of an impact on the city. So since it's rated that way, I think keeping it broad now at this point, when we're just[1625.52] So since it's rated that way, I think keeping it broad now at this point, when we're just getting into it, is the right thing to do. And yes, we can tighten it up as we go along, mainly to, to help people who are applying not be discouraged. If they say, well, it says this here, and, and I want to do that, and you're not letting me do that, that's what we want to tighten it up. But since it is a limit, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the way it is working.
Well, I'm just saying that it could, again, the question was that, if you put structural as related to the business use, you're not going to have stuff going out of the community, this is better for the landlord, because it does sound like, when you're very structural, if, like, I'm willing to, some woman owns that building, and in the end of the day, we're benefiting, it's a second argument, but we're benefiting them. And, you know, now they own ten buildings, or twelve buildings, where businesses are, so, and these businesses are getting all, I'm just saying.
But, but there is a benefit of improving those businesses, especially if it's a structural issue that they've been putting on because they don't want to pay for it, but they see this grant, they decide to do it, especially if it's a historical building, I mean, there's value there. So, I, I don't, I don't necessarily think just because you're helping the landlord, that's a bad thing either.
Why do you, I'm just saying that.
You're improving, you're improving the building, you're improving the property value, and you're improving the sale when they sell in the future, so I, I don't think that's a bad thing, I, especially if we're, if we're motivating somebody to make a structural improvement that should be made before it becomes, you know, you can't reverse it, to do it now, I think that's a benefit. And I've dealt with that in the future, during the past, of, of, you know, to save buildings because of such a thing.
But you are going by the revenue line, so this person's making massive money.
We are not going by the income.
Really?
I don't even know how you would do that, how fair would it be? Adam brought that up last, he, he brought that up, but we are talking about payroll, so it's got to be a smaller, small business.
Smaller business, okay, thank you, okay. My thinking is a little bit, I guess, a hundred and eighty degrees contra, contra degree, in that, what I've seen in any kind of, excuse word government that does what it is, once it's out there, is available, it's really hard to take it back.
Now, when it's, now, when it's budgeted annually, it's not hard to change.
Here, here's how I would feel. If someone got the grant this year for something that y'all decided, maybe we should tweak that and take it out, by God, like next year, I'm the one that wanted it, and why didn't I get it when she got, on the other hand, the opposite would be, this first person were denied, and, it's like, you know, we need a little tweak in, allow this type of request, rather than this request is no longer valid, tweaking it in rather than trying to tweak it out, because I think it's hard to tweak it out. And, you know, I, I can't do anything, it's our human nature, but if I apply for something that somebody else got last year, I'll, I'll wonder why, you know.
I, I understand that, I, I would say, I mean, I, I really view the ordinance as a framework for the program, program, and what that means is, similar with mayor said, we want, we want to incentivize people to apply for the grants. And if we get a good pool of applicants, we don't think we have since twenty eighteen, there is a stringent review and vetting process that goes on. So I don't want to write anything out in this framework here, because really, there's plenty of people who get denied every year based on either, uh, their application's not thorough or complete, there's a piece of their application that doesn't meet our guidelines, or what we view the, the, the core nature of the grant to be. That happens all the time, and, and the city can justify, well, X business didn't receive this grant money, and Y business did, but it's, it's not necessarily based on the ordinance as written here, it's based on the vetting and review process. And because you're really comparing, at that point, you're comparing apples to apples, and apples to oranges when it comes to businesses themselves. And so, you know, you can't just look at these guidelines and say, if my business applies for a grant, well, I meet everything in here as far as permitted uses, uh, but that doesn't necessarily mean that I'm the best candidate to receive the money, maybe, because.
Is it an easy thing to fill out, or do you need a determined?
You don't need a determined, but you need to pay attention.
You have to pay, do you give?
But it has a checklist.
An applicant a chance to come back and fix it?
Not after the deadline, not after the deadline.
Before the deadline, but, but you guys, do you guys tell them they have?
Yeah, they will have a checklist that they know to fill out.
Okay.
And if they want it reviewed beforehand, they can sit down with the economic development director. But we're not chasing businesses, we've done that in the past, and I'm not doing that anymore.
So if there's a question on how to fill it out, they can go to the economic development director.
And it's saved it right there on the thing, if you have a question, because, you know, a lot of people aren't persons knowing this stuff.
Yeah, we've got, we've got applications now for the current grants, and it'll change, obviously, with this. And it'll be the same thing, it'll be an actual checklist that, it'll be the cover letter of their packet, so we know, at least by the checklist, they say they have everything, and then that'll be verified.
Okay, thank you. To, to your point then, except they were, you know, really vetted and looked at thoroughly, without an ordinance, I'm not sure how that happened, with an ordinance, it's definitely going to happen. I, I'm really feeling a lot of concern about it, so I'm just saying, it's tough to take away, it's really easy to get on, and you know, all the jurisdictions, and take something away. But you have to start somewhere, different with on that, from what I heard last month, it sounded solid.
I think it's a very solid, great, great place to start, and, and, you know, the program's been successful without the ordinance. The ordinance tightens everything up from that aspect, but I'm really looking forward to seeing what types of applicants we get, what types of businesses get awarded the money in the coming year, and then reviewing that accounts, and, and saying, hey, here's, you know, this seemed to work really well, or maybe there's a piece of this that didn't quite work as well, or there's a business that we really felt like deserved, you know, to be considered, and we couldn't consider them. So then we'll have to readdress it, but that's the whole process. And I think it's important that, that it's, you know, the grant as it evolves is a living, it's a living grant, because, you know, the, the nature of the businesses in town changes all the time.
I think you made a really good point, I mean, this is, that could be living document, much like any other ordinance or anything that we have. These things are not set instead, we review them on a regular basis, I mean, we passed a, we passed personnel policy, you know, almost five years ago now, and we can at least one update to that personnel policy every single year since we've asked a revision, because we run across something that clerk's order doesn't work, and we tighten it up or loosen it based on actual experience. So, these are, these are living documents, it's really quite, it's really.
But it's supposed to be handed a document.
Well, thank you, well, so, so in this one, you can say this will be a living document.
Yeah, exactly, it's a living document, you can get a question, but it's not, so I'm all, I'm all, all in on, you need an ordinance spelled out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very comfortable, I think you're comfortable, I'm happy to move to, prevent it from being published as a document as we see it here.
Okay, I'll, I'll send the, the update out, and then Melissa will have it part of the.
I need that voted on to come out and come out of committee for a second, a second. All three of the leases are bigger too, for the record. And then, just so we know, process wise, so when it comes to council, this is October, will it come in October?
Yes, first reading will be the seventeenth.
Okay.
And then the second reading will be the twenty-first, so if it gets approved on the twenty-first, then it will be, will be set. I just talked to staff today to have everything ready, article, um, applications ready on twenty-first, so if it doesn't pass, then we can do it for it right away. We want to try to get this out as quick as possible, um, to get, start work in the spring, that's where a lot of businesses want to start work, is in the spring. So we want to make sure we get, we get the application out there quick, the, the word out there quick enough, the applications out there, give them enough time to respond, give us enough time to review and approve, and then start showing it around.
And I, I know there's a time element, so thanks for getting this to me, scheduled for everyone, and I'm excited too.
Will the ordinance be on the line before the seventeenth?
It'll go out, um, we've been putting that with the agenda. Yeah, I'll, I'll put that out with the agenda, it should.
Okay, that'll be great.
Yeah, we, we should put the ordinances out with that, so.
That'll be great, ain't always, you'll say ordinance one oh five five dot two, but you don't.
Right.
Yeah, the grow grant ordinance.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, very nice.